I just, uh... Just civil law and criminal law, um, like more matters as in like dealing with, like courts and just the, the parties involved and the type of law involved. I wasn't, when I think of city attorney's office for some reason, I had, I did not have zoning in mind, like for example, and until I was an intern and they throw at me in a pleasant way, uh, a research, a research assignment and they're like, here, present a memo on this. And I'm like, what is zoning? Like, I have no idea. Like, what are we doing? And so, stuff like that. I didn't know that actually the attorneys there, there's litigators and there's non-litigators. Um, they do a lot of things. And another point is, I assumed one attorney when they, um, they could just be like contract law. However, it was like all mixed up. Like you have one attorney that had some, some weeks, they would have criminal, uh, docket, uh, the other weeks they'd have something like zoning or contract law. And I didn't, I thought it would be just, you know, tailored to one specific area, but it's not.
It's a pretty wide-ranging opportunity.
It is. Yes.
Thank you.
Did you say, is it north of where you're from?
Hampton.
From Hampton, yes. Uh, and that's where you, you plan to go back there to practice, or?
Not necessarily. Uh, I will, I am planning on doing my externship there, uh, for the summer. However, uh, honestly, wherever a good job comes through, I'm willing to go anywhere. I'm not there to be picky on just staying on the east coast or any of those sorts.
So, if an opportunity were to arise for you in one of these areas that are marked as legal deserts, would you be willing, interested?
I'd be willing. I mean, I actually, like, I don't have, like, very specific ties that will hold me down to Hampton specifically. Uh, so, it's a good offer and, you know, it's an, uh, an area of law that I'm interested in. I wouldn't mind.
You have a lot of interests and a lot of flexibility in your interests, it sounds like.
Yeah.
So, you have a very elastic mind that expands around all sorts of different things, right?
I try, yes.
As do you, as do you, so.
So, Sana, one of the things, I, I missed the introduction, I apologize, but this is the fifth in a series of hearings involving around the state. And two weeks ago in Danville, we heard from a gentleman in private practice who was in his late sixties and he said when he turns seventy, he was going to retire. And someone asked him what, his wife had already retired in practice, what are you, what are you going to do for your practice? And he did not, um, he did not indicate that he had any plans of what was going to happen to his practice. In Danville, which is relatively large, maybe metropolitan area, um, it seems to me that this is probably the case with a number of attorneys around the state. I think there are a fair number of attorneys who are getting a little older and maybe they want to slow down and they don't, they don't really have a plan. Would something like connecting with one of these who's aging out of private practice be interesting to you?
Absolutely.
Because they have clients, they have an office system, they have, you know, it's, I think it's different, I grew scope earlier today about his experience with just hanging at, you know, at twenty-five, hanging out of a channel. And that's, I think that's really hard, not, not so much because of lawyering, but because of managing the business of the law firm, which is a different skill set that I think law school does almost nothing to prepare you for. Uh, I, I'm not sure there's a question in here. And I apologize, but I, I do feel like there's a disconnect between people who want to do, who are, who are open to the myriad of things that you seem to be open to. And then these people are, it's like, yeah, I think I can do this another few years, but then I won't stop. And there's no, there's no plan for how to transition. And they're in an area where there are not younger lawyers who are not already in a practice, whether it's public defender or economist attorney or, you know, they already have a different practice. They're, if they're practicing, their book is full. They can't take on that seventy-year-old's practice.
Right. Um, and personally, I think where that issue comes in is if, if I tend to think about the people around me and the students we have here, um, like the people that tend to be, like, just speaking of Virginia, like more towards the east, they tend to have more, like, parents within the law, uh, legal field. And so, when we come law, like the legal field, it works very much based on connections and how big your network is. And, you know, if you have family members in the legal field, your network is served. It's, it's, it's amazing. And by the time you finish law school, you already know where you're going to go. Unlike students that attend law school from like towards the west or towards the west of Virginia. And, you know, typically the, their parents probably didn't even get a grad degree or anything related to the legal field specifically. So, they lack connection and therefore it's, it's harder.
To what degree, um, do you think your student debt, if you have any, will play into your decision about where you'll go to practice and what you'll do?
Well, I do have, like, um, I think, I think it will play a role. Cause, um, I mean, based on how much it's going to be taken out of every check, you have to maintain a living at some point. And it has to be reasonable. Um, so it has to be a job that provides enough to have a reasonable average life, plus pay off the student debt. Um, that's why I was, uh, a little bit iffy about legal aid work. Um, as much as I would like to pursue that, I am unsure if that would be enough after law school to sustain my life and pay off my student debt.
Have you thought about public service loan forgiveness?
I did not.
Do you, do you know about that?
About that a little bit, yes. Um, because that's something that I did with my book. Uh, but I don't think, sorry, I don't think that most students, except for a few of you all, really know the benefits of public service loan forgiveness. Do you all think that's fair?
It's fair. Um, I think through my internship, I learned a little bit more. Um, so that's, I mean, that's why I'm thinking of possibly going back to, um, like another city attorney's office or the Virginia prosecution's office, prosecutor's office.
Was that the first you knew about the public service loan forgiveness was from Professor Moody?
Yes.
Okay. Do, do you feel like the other students are aware of that and think that might influence them to, uh, maybe take the road not taking a legal, uh, job or pursuing a different kind of legal job? Maybe might pay less and might have other rewards?
Honestly, it's possible. I don't think many students know about that. I mean, we do know that, you know, typically public jobs, you do get student debt out of the way. But in my idea, the way I used to think about it, I thought it would just be like, you know, like teachers. Everybody knows, you know, teachers, they have that program, kind of the education. But I didn't assume we have it until we got introduced to it in class and then I learned about it more in my internship.
How, how much debt are, are you, not specifically about you, but do you have a sense of how much debt your classmates are coming out of school with?
I think probably coming out, like the way I've been seeing students around me, not necessarily myself, but, um, tuition plus just like enough to sustain a living, like rent and all the, uh, other stuff, probably like bare minimum, it'd be like around two hundred something, bare minimum.
It's like buying a house.
Yeah.
It's like a buying house in the nineties, I guess now.
And paying it off for ten years.
A lot of the students that recently graduated have graduated with between like two and three thousand, two hundred and fifty thousand.
Wow.
But a millstone.
I mean, I would say that when I graduated, I had a hundred and eighty thousand and it was only for possible.
Yeah.
Wow.
Let me ask you this question, Sana. So, do you think that other students know or do you know? Because I don't know if I really talked about this, that, that public service loan forgiveness also applies to, um, non-corporated organizations too.
I did not know that.
Okay. So I need to get that out there.
Well, could you tell her about the idea that you mentioned to me before we came in here to see what the students think about that? I was going to say it, but I was like, I don't understand your thunder on that.
So, there are two things came into my mind. One is, and I am not the queen of knowing the nuances of this. You know, in the, in the olden days, there were a lot of ROTC programs on campus, which is Reserve Officer Training Corps. That military pays for, I think they even paid you, not just for your board tuition, but you may have actually gotten stipend for four years of college. And then you owe them six years or some, some period of time afterward. And I think you actually get paid during that time too. But they, you know, you have to work for them before you owe them money back. Question number one is, might something like that work for law school where, say there's a program here at Appalachian where, you know, you do your three years, something, and but you have to spend six years after that in...
Litigators, um, they do a lot of things. And another point is, I assume one attorney when they, um, they could just be like contract law. However, it was like all mixed up. Like you have one attorney that had some, some weeks, they would have criminal, uh, docket, uh, the other weeks they'd have something like zoning or contract law. And I didn't, I thought it would be just, you know, tailored to one specific area. But it's not.
It's a pretty wide-ranging opportunity.
It is, yes.
Thank you.
Did you say, is it north of where you're from?
Hampton.
From Hampton. Uh, and that's where you, you plan to go back there to practice, or?
Not necessarily. Um, I will, I am planning on doing my externship there, um, for the summer. However, um, honestly, wherever a good job comes through, I'm willing to go anywhere. I'm not there to be on, just staying on the east coast or any of those sorts.
So if an opportunity were to arise for you in one of these areas that are marked as legal deserts, would you be willing, interested?
I'd be willing. I mean, I actually like, I don't have like very specific ties that will hold me down to Hampton specifically. Uh, so it's a good offer and, you know, it's in, uh, an area of law that I'm interested in. I wouldn't mind.
You have a lot of interests and a lot of flexibility in your interests, it sounds like.
Yeah.
So you have a very elastic mind that expands around all sorts of different things, right?
I try, yes.
As do you, as do you, so.
So Sana, one of the things, I, I, I missed the introduction, I apologize. But this is the fifth in a series of hearings we've only run the state. And two weeks ago in Danville, we heard from a gentleman in private practice who was in his late sixties and he said when he turned seventy, he was going to retire. And someone asked him what, his wife had already retired at practice. What are you, what are you going to do with your practice? And he did not, um, he did not indicate that he had any plans of what was going to happen with his practice. In Danville, which is relatively large, maybe metropolitan area. Um, it seems to me that this is probably the case with a number of attorneys around the state. I think there are a fair number of attorneys who are getting a little older and maybe they want to slow down. And they don't, they don't really have a plan. Would something like connecting with one of these who's aging out of private practice be interesting to you?
Absolutely.
Because they have clients, they have an office system, they have, you know, it's, I think it's different, like Bruce spoke earlier today about his experience with just hanging at, you know, at twenty-five, hanging out of a channel. And that's, I think that's really hard, not, not so much because of lawyering, but because of managing the business of the law firm, which is a different skillset that I think law school does almost nothing to prepare you for. I, I'm not sure there's a question in here. And I apologize, but I, I do feel like there's a disconnect between people who want to do, you know, who are open to the myriad of things that you seem to be open to. And then these people are, it's like, yeah, I think I can do this another few years, but then I'm going to stop. And there's no, there's no plan for how to transition. And they're in an area where there are not younger lawyers who are not already in a practice, whether it's public defender or economist attorney, or, you know, they already have a different practice. They're, if their practice, their book is full, they can't take on that seventy-year-old's practice.
Right. And personally, I think where that issue comes in is if, if I tend to think about the people around me and the students we have here, um, like the people that tend to be like, just speaking of Virginia, like more towards the east, they tend to have more like parents within the law, uh, legal field. And so when we come law, like the legal field, it works very much based on connections and how big your network is. And, you know, if you have family members in the legal field, your network starts. It's, it's, it's amazing. And by the time you finish law school, you already know where you're going to go. Unlike students that attend law school from like towards the west or towards the west of Virginia. And, you know, typically the, their parents probably didn't even get a grad degree or anything related to the legal field specifically. So they lack connection and therefore it's, it's harder.
To what degree, um, do you think your student debt, if you have any, will play into your decision about where you'll go to practice and what you'll do?
Well, I do have, like, um, I think, I think it will play a role. Cause, um, I mean, based on how much it's going to be taken out of every check, you have to maintain a living at somewhere and it has to be reasonable. Um, so it has to be a job that provides enough to have a reasonable average life plus pay off the student debt. Um, that, that's why I was, uh, a little bit iffy about legal aid work. Um, as much as I would like to pursue that, I am unsure of that would be enough after law school to sustain my life and pay off my student debt.
Have you thought about public service loan forgiveness?
I did not.
Do you, do you know about that?
About that a little bit, yes. Um, because that's something that I did with my book. Uh, but I don't think, sorry, I don't think that most students, except for a few of you, all really know the benefits of public service loan forgiveness. Do you all think that's fair?
It's fair. Um, I think through my internship, I learned a little bit more. Um, so that's, I mean, that's why I'm thinking of possibly going back to, um, like another city attorney's office or the Virginia prosecution's office, prosecutor's office.
Was that the first you knew about the public service loan forgiveness was from Professor Moody?
Yes.
Okay. Do, do you feel like the other students are aware of that? You think that might influence them to, uh, maybe take the road not taking in a legal, uh, job or pursuing a different kind of legal job? Maybe might pay less and might have other reward?
Honestly, it's possible. I don't think many students know about that. I mean, we do know that, you know, typically public jobs, you do get student debt out of the way. But in my idea, the way I used to think about it, I thought it would just be like, you know, like teachers. Everybody knows, you know, teachers, they have that program, kind of the education. But I didn't assume we have it until we got introduced to it in class. And then I learned about it more in my internship.
How, how much debt are, are you, not specifically about you, but do you have a sense of how much debt your classmates are coming out of school with?
I think probably coming out, like the way I've been seeing students around me, not necessarily myself, but, um, tuition plus just like enough to sustain a living, like rent and all the, uh, other stuff, probably like bare minimum. It'd be like around two hundred something, bare minimum.
It's like buying a house.
Yeah.
It's like a buying house in the nineties, I guess now.
And paying it off for ten years.
A lot of the students that recently graduated, had graduated with between like two and three thousand, two hundred and fifty thousand.
Wow.
But a millstone.
I mean, I would say that when I graduated, I had a hundred and eighty thousand and it was only for possible.
Yeah.
Wow.
Let me ask you this question, Sana. So do you think that other students know, or do you know, because I don't know if I really talked about this, that, that public service loan forgiveness also applies to, um, non-courting, we're going to mention this too.
I did not know that.
Okay. So I need to get that out there.
Well, could you tell her about the idea that you mentioned to me before we came in here and see what the students think about that? I was going to say it, but I was like, I don't understand your thunder on that.
So there, two things came into my mind. One is, and I am not the queen of knowing the nuances of this. You know, in the, in the olden days, there were a lot of ROTC programs on campus, which is Reserve Officer Training Corps. That military pays for, I think they even paid you, not just for your board tuition, but you may have actually gotten stipend for four years of college. And then you owe them six years or some, some period of time afterward. And I think you actually get paid during that time too. But they, you know, you have to work for them before you owe them money back. Question number one is, might something like that work for law school where, say there's a program here at Appalachian where, you know, you do your three years, something, and, but you have to spend six years after that in this, you know, Russell, McCann, and one of the local counties practicing law. That's one option. The other thing is, um, there's a sort of a similar program in West Virginia has for doctors, where they will pay your medical school tuition and certain out-of-pocket costs if you agree to go do public health in one of their more remote counties for six years, whatever that time period is. And I don't know, I mean, I have no idea whether that would appeal to someone or not. Cause I'm, you know, everybody is true, isn't a certain age. I mean, some of you aren't quite that certain, but, you know, I don't know what it's like to be in my twenties or even thirties now. But, you know, it's been a long time. Um, I don't know, is that something that might work at least on a limited basis?
Yes, I do think so. I mean, especially if it's, we're talking about six years, you know, like.
Oh, I, I think six years is a valid standard.
Okay, yeah. I mean, six years, if you think about it, like right now, we're in law school for like three years. So like, six years is not a long time to be able to get rid of a debt that's probably going to be haunting you for like ten years or more. Uh, so I do think that it would, it would help, it would definitely help.
Well, I, I will tell you, I used to work, I mean, before I retired, I worked in housing. And I had somebody in their thirties say to me, you know why my generation is buying houses? Cause we have a student debt thing and that's bigger than our mortgage payment would be. But I moved, so the ripple effects beyond law practice and your personal lives. I mean, it is frankly, student debt in general affects the broader economy.
Do you feel like these areas, do you sort of broadly know which areas or suspect which areas, we're talking about, we're talking about legal deserts?
I think it would be more towards the west.
Yeah. Do, do you feel that, um, how to put this? Um, do you feel that, that there may be some barriers to, well, some cultural factors that, that might weigh in your decision to consider going back home, going back to, uh, Virginia Beach, uh, you know, Hampton, Tidewater area, as opposed to sticking around in, in the coalfields or former coalfields of southwest Virginia to practice?
Um, I don't know about the cultural factors, but I'd like, uh, the way we are here, I mean, by the time we get to have break, we, we're eager to go back home, to go to the city. Um, just because there's more options there, like just, you know, like food options, uh, just mall options, job options. Um, I think just, it's just a matter of getting used to living in the city and then coming to a, uh, quiet place in comparison to a fast-paced environment. Um, I do know a close friend of mine who is from New York. You know, lived in New York for a long time, New York City. And, um, you know, she's having a hard time, you know, living here and like staying here. Um, and she's very eager to graduate and head back home. Just because she just, she's a city person, you know? Not everybody can live in a quiet place.
Has she been to the county fair? Maybe that would change her mind.
She has.
Yeah, so it's okay. Well, that's great.
Um, for either of you, I would love to know if, um, maybe it's too early for you to be thinking about this, but do you have concerns about your options for Virginia bar prep? And not only financially, but also in terms of accessing programs that you'd need to prepare for the bar?
I'll start. Um, so honestly, not, not here. Uh, actually through Appalachian School of Law, we have bar prep. Um, that's basically the program we have to prep for the bar. Um, and that's just given to us. So as soon as we graduate, we're, we have the program ready to go. And I believe it's a ten-week program. And you, so it's not something that we're worried about.
Yeah. Do, do your, do your fellow students know that? Especially the ones that are maybe inclined not to take the Virginia bar exam?
Um, they do. I'm not sure that bar prep is necessarily tailored to Virginia law.
It's not, it's general. For all of our students. And they learn about it in orientation, so they know about it. It's a huge burden, something we didn't have.
Yeah.
Me too, that's what I'm saying, I was also having that problem too. Yeah, everybody knows, I mean, it's wide open.
So the cost barrier has been removed here as well as the access barrier?
But it's not tailored towards Virginia.
Okay. Yeah.
Is the Virginia bar exam itself an impediment? Because we have our own special protected bar exam, but that is that? An impediment because you can take the, what is it called? The universal bar exam?
It's the form.
Yeah. UBE.
But just thinking about that, then is that more of a, is that an inducement for y'all? Or not necessarily for you all, because you all seem like you're interested in the state of Virginia, but for your classmates to go take another state bar exam because there's, there isn't that barrier of, well, the public Virginia specific stuff that I'm going to have to deal with in the state of Virginia, whereas if I go Maryland or, I don't know.
DC, yeah.
I've heard that. I've heard from a couple of people that Virginia has bells and whistles. And, um, but, and I was like, oh, so does New York, so does California. And, I mean, wherever you go, we have the Gen, the Gen Bar coming out. And so our class, when spring starts, we're the first people to bring that coming along. ASL for that, so.
And what is that?
That's the new UBE. It's not, it's not a complete replacement of the UBE, not all elements. Cause every state will have their own curated portion.
Oh, I see.
Um, but it's basically the new national standard bar exam.
And the case to adopt it, it's going to, from what we perceive, um, from the NextGen Bar and the model questions, the questions and format are very, very different. I don't want to make mistakes wrong, but they're very, very different than your Virginia Bar, they're very different than your UBE, or UBE states' questions are just very, very different. Um, often there's some of those, but they're very different. And a lot of states are starting to adopt it, but their class will be, they're the first ones to really kind of, um, as we have altered our curriculum for how we're teaching these and not just doing UBE type questions, um, but also some of these NextGen Bar exams have questions, they're really, they're, guys are sort of kind of beginning. Uh, but they're the first class to give some of the different curriculums that are tailored for that NextGen Bar exam.
Katie, we should go take some more bar exams.
No, we should not for fun. That's all, that's all here.
Katie, I, I would like to ask you to, um, testify next for us.
Oh, okay.
Uh, because of your knowledge of the student body and where they go and, you know, what, what factors they consider. And also you have practiced in criminal law locally, right? So you know something about, uh, the, the legal desert situation as well. Come on, Katie.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Oh, Sana, will you start?
I, I'll call that being, um.
Um, well, David, what do you want me to speak about first? You want me to talk about some of my kind of, um, side individual research that I have done just asking students?
David, if you want to just call out the topics so we can.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Uh, let's, let's start off, before we talk about students, let's talk about your own career, Katie. Tell us about your practice here and what you saw about the legal desert situation.
So I went to prosecutor in Tassell County for just about twelve years. And, um, when I, I left that practice, I came here to ASL where I went to school. I graduated here in two thousand and twelve. I'm from Florida, I'm not from here, so I'm one of the rare people who came to school here, stuck around here, um, and never really left. Um, you know, a lot played into that, the fact that I was young, I did not have children. Um, I wasn't really rooted anywhere, I've always loved the mountains. Um, it was just kind of, it just kind of happened. Um, I had a really great job at a law school, at the Tassell County Attorney's Office, and I lived there. And I stuck around there for twelve years, um, which is very important. Um, so I will say that I do think that Tassell and McCann County probably have less of a legal desert than some other places in southwest Virginia. I think, would you agree?
I think in some ways, uh, that's true for some practice areas.
Yeah, I would agree. There's like, in terms of criminal law, I don't think there's a huge legal desert in our area of criminal law. But some of the things that Bruce talked about, like, you know, your estate and, and real estate type of, of practice, most of the attorneys who have really made that kind of, you know, their area of practice, I feel like they're kind of aging out.
Or have aged.
Or have aged out, or, you know. Um, and I don't think they really have taken the time to train anybody to come and take over the firms. And not because of, they don't want to, but I think just because there is a little bit of a lack of interest on practically, which is coming back to our students here at, at ASL and other law schools. Of how do we get these students to kind of fill in the gaps where we see, um, an opening for a really great career and an opening in a gap of what is needed in these specific communities? Um, I think the lack of, not necessarily McCann County, Tassell County being significant legal desert is because of ASL. And, you know, I think when, I think Bruce and I have practiced with a lot of attorneys that have graduated from ASL. So, um, I think definitely historically, more students stayed in this area than really do currently. I don't quite know what the reason for that is. Um, and, and that kind of leads me to my next topic in, in that I've been asking my students, you know, if you are somebody who is on the fence, you don't know what bar exam you're going to take and Virginia is an option, why are you not taking Virginia, but you're taking a different bar exam? And I get two answers for the most part, and that, um, Virginia's not a UBE state and the other bar that they're considering is an easier bar. Um, I hear mostly Tennessee, West Virginia, Kentucky, and Maryland. And those, and especially in this area, we're so close to all of these other states. So if somebody who lives in Bristol is so close to Tennessee, um, that it's very easy for them to establish this practice in Tennessee that is, you know, ten minutes over the Virginia line. Um, and so those are the answers that I've kind of got there, especially from our younger students who really haven't rooted necessarily in a specific location and are free to kind of go where they please. Is there anything else you think I need to address?
Anything else we think we should know?
Um, I don't think so. Um, I think that is so far kind of where my research has led me, but I will continue to ask students and kind of figure out what is going on in terms of where people are going to take the bar. Um, I, I, I will say too, that ASL doesn't just teach courses that are geared towards Virginia. Now, most of our professors are licensed in Virginia. So part of me finds it odd, you know, when I teach a class, it's hard for me not to refer to the Virginia law because this is where I practice law. So sometimes I do find it odd that we have so many professors who are licensed in Virginia and are frequently referring to Virginia law, but we still have a lot of students who are not taking the Virginia bar exam, but we don't have any classes. We do have some classes, but they are not all, um, specifically geared towards Virginia law. We have a really wide variety of classes that are practical classes or practical classes where, um, it's not state-specific. Um, and it's really great for attorneys in terms of getting out to the field and knowing what to do. Um, and not just, um, being able to have a bar exam, but they are not Virginia-specific courses either. So I'm not sure if that plays a role in things. And we do have Virginia-specific courses, like Virginia, uh, pre-trial practice and procedure and stuff like that, that they can take as two or three years. So there is that option, but the majority of our practical classes are not state-specific.
So are any of your students able to take advantage of third-year practice rule work with?
Yep. And frequently they do. Um, there are a few states that are very weird and specific and they're frequently changing their rules about these third-year practices which, one of them is Tennessee, who gives us a really hard time. Um, but most of our students do take advantage of the third-year practice which is, especially if they're in offices like public defender offices and prosecutor offices because they're able to get to court and to do a little more, and they do take advantage of it.
Is there anything that the Virginia State Bar or the profession in Virginia can do, you think, to incentivize Virginia law schools to encourage students to practice in Virginia or take the Virginia Bar? Like what would that take, do you think?
I don't know. I wish I had.
Yeah.
I don't know. Um, I often think about, you know, Virginia typically is a little slower sometimes to adopt new things. So I will, I will find it interesting as, as other states start adopting this NextGen Bar exam, um, it's supposed to be a more practical approach to the bar exam. And I think most of us who have taken the bar exam, said that it's really not that practical. Um, it will be interesting to see as other states do this, what Virginia does. And if students are looking for a bar exam that is a NextGen Bar exam versus our bar exam. I don't know. I think time will tell. Um, I think as, as people start taking this NextGen Bar exam, will have a little bit of a better incentive there. Um, you know, I think student loan forgiveness is a huge thing. You know, it's a, we have students that are coming out of law school, I mean, and I was one of them. Just, it's whole lot like the debt.
What's the most debt you've seen something come out of?
So I would know a few. And these are students who like have felt comfortable about it.
Sure.
Who I do with two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in debt. And that's, that's the most of that part.
Nice.
And that wasn't including undergrad. So, um, it's a lot of money.
As far as the bar exam itself goes, some states have some version of a thing called admission by privilege, where they don't have a bar exam for some, some students who may meet certain requirements. What do you think about the fairly radical idea of moving beyond bar exam? So for example, how many, how many law schools are we in? Eight or nine now? It's a number of law schools. So what, what about, very radical notion here? Uh, if we admitted ASL graduates who met certain requirements, who had, say, a certain GPA, who had taken certain classes, who had met certain requirements, they'd taken, you know, your evidence and, you know, your basic curriculum and the APA requirements for accreditation. What if we did admission by privilege and just licensed those? Do you think that that would encourage people to stay in Virginia? Part one, and part two, do you think that would encourage people to maybe filter out some of these outlawing areas?
Yeah, I think, I think, you, you all tell me, don't you think like if they were like, oh yeah, if you just take your required classes, you can pass the bar? I think it would be a huge incentive, whether it's a good idea or not, idea or not, I, I don't.
What do you think, do you think of, of why it might not be a good idea?
I would be concerned with the way every law school's curriculum, maybe just a little bit different. Um, you know, I think that they, there would need to be significant credit. Credit, that, that students did, so there was a little bit more than just sitting in evidence.
Okay. Andrew has got a question also.
Well, as far as comment, forty years ago, I believe it was Iowa, if you graduated from the University of Iowa Law School with a certain GPA, and I don't know anymore about this, but if you did it, you were automatically admitted to the bar. I don't know whether Iowa has any other law schools or had at that point, but there was certainly some precedent for that.
West Virginia, uh, I think did some version of that for years because Helen Phillips, you remember Helen? Helen, uh, had to go sit for the West Virginia bar exam years ago. And she had gone to the University of Virginia.
Yeah.
So she had to go sit for it. And so they administered the exam in the Capitol dome, the West Virginia Capitol. And she said it was her and like two other people who were taking the West Virginia bar exam who had not gone to the University of West Virginia where they had admission by privilege.
That's wild. I would love to see the research on that. And I don't know if anybody ever did anything like that, to research how these attorneys have fared.
Right.
You know, uh, their careers, I don't know if they've been able to fit in.
I'm sure there's people practicing up there now that went in that way.
I mean, I don't necessarily, you know, I have a lot of feelings about the bar that probably I might not should share on a public forum. Um, I, you're welcome.
Uh, we have two law, law students that have joined us and I'd like to hear from them.
Yeah, that's okay.
You guys want to come on?
I think they can give a, a different perspective.
You first, you first want to hot seat.
Oh, oh, go on, go on this side. The, uh, the speaker's over here. You can tell us your name and where you're. You can tell us your name and where you're, where you're from, where you were before law school, and maybe what brought you here, just as background.
My name is Roberto Mignolet. I'm from New Jersey.
The, the, the two microphones, it's, uh,
On this.
Talking to, one is on the desk, and one is lit up to your right.
You see it over here? No, no, no. Down here. You see like the dome?
No, 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 okay.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Camera and a microphone. That has a camera and a microphone. Those are, are the two that you're taking.
Yeah, you won't hear yourself around the room. That doesn't work. Yeah, so you just have to.
Stay where, stay where you are.
Yes, 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 perfect. That's okay.
Yeah, Roberto, I'm from New Jersey. What brought me to ASL? I mean, you know, the scholarship help. Uh, also, like, I, I, I hadn't heard, I, I had to confirm it here while, while I was there, but I will say like the professors we have here, especially the 1L, like, I don't, I don't want to sound like a plug, but in all reality, like, those 1L professors especially are like very qualified. They learn very well. We have our, our STEM pro professors like educated, has like educational certificates, like, from Harvard, you know? And she like invents these games to like get it across to us. I know someone who was her DA who just did very well for her because of that. All our professors, I really think, were really great. And yeah, that's, that's what my experience here, I really, 1L instructors, I really.
Roberto, what year are you in?
I'm a 2L, so I just kind of.
And you started on the fall, right?
Yeah, I'm a fall starter, 2L, so yeah, I've been through two semesters, my third semester.
And what have you done in terms of externships?
Well, before I came here, I was a, uh, not in the most traditional way, but I was a, I was a law clerk, actually before I came here. Uh, in a firm in New Jersey, it was county counsel, so essentially, you know, the in-house counsel for the county. Um, and I was a law. Uh, Union County, New Jersey, yeah. Elizabeth, I don't know.
I actually practiced in Elizabeth, we'll talk.
Oh.
My father was in Patterson, I think.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay, yeah, so I'm from, yeah, I'm actually from Essex County, but I, I, I got access, and I love hardship there. Um, and I was a law clerk there. That kind of, uh, helped, you know, shape a lot of it, and yeah, I ended up here.
So, so the next question, and this is not a commitment, do you think you'll stay in Virginia?
Yes.
Or chance, or you feel more comfortable farther, closer to the secret?
I, I will say, like, I think a lot of students, just based on like us talking, are on my boat, whereas like, we, especially, you know, the younger ones, and like, we're just, you know, we're figuring out, like, we're not really committed to a place. And a lot of us are just going back home because there's really like, we don't see as much incentive to stay. Maybe, maybe it's, if, we don't see as much of a nexus between, for first, for people like me who are like from, like, I'm 10 minutes away from Manhattan, I'm in this big city-like environment. Maybe we don't see enough of a nexus between ASL and maybe, uh, those urban areas of, of Virginia, which are more like home, maybe up in the, I don't know, uh, DC area type. Uh, so maybe, I think that influences a lot, because I don't, I don't hear a lot of commitment. As like, I want to go back home, other than I don't really see why I would stay in Virginia.
What, what would convince you to stay in Virginia?
Well, you guys just talked about the whole idea of, you know, just having a certain GPA and not having to take the bar, that would.
Yeah, yeah.
That would, that would.
Do you think that sentiment would be shared by your classmates?
Oh, yeah. The bar, because I mean, school is one thing, you prepare for it, and at a certain point, you like, you know, you're, you're learning and you're preparing yourself as an attorney, but you're also enjoying it because once you're a couple of semesters in, and that monkey off, gets off the back of like, I have to go, it's more, it's less survival, and I'm actually like being, you know, into this education aspect. Um, I think we get to like enjoy that. And I know I sit in evidence now, because it's a lot, I enjoy that, and I get to, you know, see the other side of it. Um, so yeah, just having to, being allowed to focus on that and being a student, um, that would really.
What kind of law do you think you'd like to practice?
Well, I did like the admin kind of law that we didn't bring back home, I did, I did like that. I'm not really set on like a specific, um, I tend to prefer civil overcome over like that.
So you would, you don't mind practicing in places in a much larger area of your work?
I, I, I am like, I would prefer like something more city, more city-like, but it doesn't, yeah, I don't have a greater E C R.
So what if I made you an offer to go through to work in St. Tazewell? What would you say about that? Would that be a no-go for you to move to the community of Tazewell?
It would, I would consider it, but like, but I gotta, I think for, I speak for, I know a good person was, it's the, like, it's the whole prospect of having a state bar, right? Not being U V E, that's a real, like, that's a real, like, thing to consider.
And that is known and considered amongst the population?
What if the, um.
I didn't hear that.
What is, is the question?
It is, yeah.
The, the U V, having to take the test in Virginia, it's not a U V state?
If an employer were to, um, bring you on before you passed the bar, um, and maybe even there was a stipend for you during that time when you were studying for the bar, would that be enough to incentivize you to take? Like, so you had a guaranteed job, and they were going to help you live a little bit while you were in the period of studying and taking the bar, would that make a difference?
I think if the job like really aligned with what I, I don't know, I don't have, uh, put forth as I have all these interests, but like, if it really aligned, if it was something I saw myself doing, that would, yeah, I would consider it. I think for a lot of us, that, I, it's a sentiment I hear over and over again. For a lot of us, it's the fact that we kind of have to make that commitment away from Virginia early because we know we don't have to like, you know, we're gonna have to take a whole nother bar. It's kind of like a decision that is more 1L than maybe we would like. Because like, I feel like if we, if this was a U V state, and we didn't have to worry about like taking this additional bar, and we're here for three years, and we're interacting with Virginia, like, we're making connections here, like, and a lot of the speakers we get are from here, from Virginia, then I think that a lot of us, who are not as rooted in going back home, like, would, this is where we went to school, and it would be more natural progression.
And then there's sort of a snowball effect, because the more ASL students you have staying in the area, and you build up a network, build up the alumni, alumni connections, and now that, I don't know, maybe you get somebody.
And I, and I think that Professor Wood definitely tested that. We get asked over and over again, like, it comes up by professors, because there is that emphasis on like Virginia law, and so. And we'll be asked by professors all the time from 1L, they'll be like, Professor Wood asks us, are you going to practice in Virginia? And it's usually like, people know, people know, like 1L, people have an idea of what they're going to do, and it's because, you know, you have to consider that early because of the bar. Kind of shield yourself, kind of like, it's kind of like, once you're a non-Virginian person, like, kind of have the way you feel like you have to stay in that league.
I know you, this admission by privilege is not something you thought about before today, but if, if that were something that was on the table, if you said that would be maybe the number one thing that would steer you to stay in Virginia or to practice in Virginia? If you knew that if you met certain requirements, you could be automatically admitted to the Virginia State Bar without having to take that test?
I don't want to be evasive, but that combined with like an offer, like, or a job or a prospect I, I am interested in, yes, would definitely do. And I think the whole bar thing would.
It's not evasive, that's an honest answer I've been hearing.
I, I think the not having to take the bar thing will also have its own consequences. 1L informed that determination, and it's the fact that like, because I know, well, early on in my law school career, and now Virginia is a serious thing for me. I'm like going to school, and I'm like taking, I'm being more part of the Virginia community. Like, I'm going on, and I'm exploring these opportunities. More than I would otherwise.
Do you think that would, in addition to incentivizing the people that are currently in law schools in Virginia to stay in Virginia to practice? Do you think that would draw more people into Virginia law schools or to apply to Virginia law schools if they knew that admission by privilege was an option?
I think most definitely, and especially I can think of a specific group of students that would love that, and it's priceless. Because I, I'm in Iowa, for example, and I know, I think at the 1L, you know what kind of student you are. And I know I am an A C student, and I might very well qualify for that privilege. And Virginia has it from time. I could see how a lot of us would object to being tried. Think, uh.
Bruce, we have another student to hear from, so. Sure, absolutely, I'm sorry, I've been up. You want to come up and, uh, talk with us a little bit?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Use your theater, your stage voice.
He has a stage voice.
Where, where, where do you want me to start?
Name.
My name is Mark Steely, I'm a 1L, I'm a returned 1L, repeated offender, I was, I was going to be a 2L with that guy right there, and they, they made me restart. So I'm redoing this again.
And where are you from?
I live in Fredericksburg, Virginia. That's, that's, that's my home, a record right now, until I moved to Maryland, which, which is where I spent my last 30 years of my life, in Maryland. I was a police officer over there, yeah.
And, and what brought you to law school and brought you here?
What brought me here was the, uh, the intake people. They were fantastic. Nothing short of just amazing.
In, in what way?
I mean, just the way they greeted you, the way they spoke to you, uh, the way they just kind of said, hey, look, this is a small place, this is a small town, you know, you can stay here, you can study, you can concentrate, you can this, 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 and this, right? After you get in, you find out there is absolutely nothing to do but do those things. Which is fine, you know, which, which is fine, but, uh, and, and I'm a, I'm a family man. So I've been married 40 years. So my wife was looking at me coming to law school as an appointment. You know, there ain't no problem, I'll see you when you get here Thanksgiving, you know, that kind of thing. It's, 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 uh, you know, they accepted my VA. So, you know.
So you have veterans benefits that are helping to pay for school, I mean?
It is what's paying for school.
It is?
Yeah.
Awesome.
I'm a, I'm a multiple combat tour.
Excellent.
Person. Yep, and, uh, you know, absolutely, to piggyback on what my colleague said here about the 1L instructors, they are fantastic, they are so passionate about their craft. And, and, and 1Ls get to learn and, and kind of see how they think, and kind of pick their brain, you know, me for that, that personal piece, and it makes a difference on, on how people move through the program, I think.
Do you plan to go back to Maryland after you graduate?
Well, I, I said, I, I live here in Fredericksburg, Virginia, right now. But I'm on, I'm trying to find another house on the water in Maryland.
I see.
I've spent my, I've spent the majority of my life in Maryland, my sons live in Maryland, and, uh, I, I do plan on going back to Maryland and, and taking the bar.
What area of law are you more interested in?
What you should ask that question, man. Last year, we had a professor, Gallagher, had a group of people come in here from, it's called, it's Legal Aid, but it's Apple Red or something like that.
Right. Ap- Appalachian Research and Defense Fund.
Yes.
Apple Red.
Yes. I was absolutely 100% one over after that conference. After that meet and greet, I mean, I've, I've, I've been in law enforcement, I've, I've talked to prosecutors, defense attorneys, I've done all that sort of stuff, you know, on a regular basis. But I just am at a point in my life where I want to make a, a change, and I want to do it for free. I want to do it for free. I already can't be able to retire my checks. I came here now to strictly get knowledge and be able to do something free. My interest is in senior citizens and veterans. But I know that according to what Apple Red was saying, if I was just to go to Apple Red and spend two years in the weeds, in the grind, I'm going to have all this experience, you know, a little bit of contract law, a little bit of property stuff, you, you know what I mean? And so, I just think that's a place for me to be, personally.
They're, they're a famous program, they've had great leadership for years.
Yep. And I just have to find one close to where I'm, to where I'm living, you know, or I figure out a way to, to make it happen for myself. But I, I just haven't changed my, my trainer thought since they came. I mean, I'm not over, I'm not over the moon, I'm not here to make 100, $200,000 a year, you know, as, as what we see on TV, it's just not really like that. But, you know, I feel like I can make a difference and make a change. And, and, and Professor Gallagher's always asked me, well, she know, but last year was all about what's your why? Why, why are you here at law school? And, uh, and at the end of that symmetra, she's going to ask me another question, it's going to be, has your why changed? And my why was absolutely defined in my 1L, my first 1L year, and it is not going to change. I cannot see a change thus far.
I think you're going to be an amazing lawyer.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Thank you. I appreciate that vote of confidence.
I'm glad that you enjoyed that presentation, because I thought it was, it was really good as well. So I'm glad to get that.
I mean, I, I don't know what everybody else took out, and I got it, I, I got a different, I got a different plate of food in front of me, meaning that I already got these retirement checks, right? But a young person that's 23, 24, 25, trying to get their self squared away and on the right track, you know, they, they may have to go to a different direction, but I'm sure there's a lot of folks that feel the same way I do. As a police officer, in my younger days, I absolutely, hindsight is always 20/20. I always, I, I've always thought the last 30, 40 years of my life, that if I had an opportunity to make a change and make a difference, this is where I was going to be able to do it at. Because I, I'm locked up, but I wish I hadn't locked up. There's always this one little kid that deserved another change. This kid's mother comes walking up to me, you know what I mean, and says, hey, you know, thank you so much for, for letting my son go, or slapping him on the hand, or this, that, and the other, right? As long as it doesn't come back and bite you, there's nothing wrong with having some compassion. You know what I mean? And I wish that, I, I know that we get governed by numbers. Prosecutor's office, in the state attorney's office, hey, how many, how many, gotta, gotta get them off the road, gotta get them off the docket, that, 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 you know what I mean? But at some point in time, we got to take a minute to take a breath and figure out how we can save this guy's life, this young man's life, this young lady's life, just to make a difference. And that's all I wanted, to make a difference.
Mark, you're bringing tears to my eyes.
Oh, I'm sorry to hear that, ma'am, no problem.
I'm excited by it, I'm really, really, really inspired.
You could do a TED Talk.
Yeah.
He really could do a TED Talk.
I don't even know whether he could.
But you just did.
You know, you could consider the Delmarva Peninsula, because we have a lack of lawyers there. Um. Virginia, Virginia and Maryland, you could make a difference in both places.
I, I do not, I do not dislike Virginia.
Yeah.
But I'm 100% a civil professional.
Yeah.
And everybody says, you know, Virginia, Maryland, 100%, 100%, oh yeah, we'd love to have you, but 100% does not mean the same everywhere.
Yeah.
I was 100% in North Carolina, and that allowed me to, that allowed me to save $22.98 a month on my mortgage. $22.
Yes.
It's a happy meeting.
Yep.
Nowadays. You, you know what I mean? So every, every place, every pocket, so a veteran like myself, I want, I want my money to go further.
Yeah, so it goes further in Maryland?
Absolutely.
Okay, so it's not just the family?
I'm just, I'm not bragging, I had a $700,000 home loan on the water, it saved me $1,000 a month on my mortgage. I'm just, I'm not bragging, I had a seven hundred thousand dollar home, I'm on the water, it saved me a thousand dollars a month on my mortgage. That's a big difference.
Yeah.
So, I'm, I'm in Virginia now. Oh yeah, we love, we get a hundred percent. And when you go pick it, it's for a one point five acres, I got a five and a half acre lot where I live. But it's only an acre and a half, let's say, you understand? So when people really start taking hindsight, it's always twenty-twenty, you, you think about it? You know, you, you gotta give something. This gentleman was talking to Roberto about, you know, having an opportunity to come in. And to get the, uh, the program where you, you just passed the bar. I mean, where you just, uh, passed law school. From what everything Professor Gallagher says and every other professor's ever sat up here and gave a lecture, says that. It's like throwing out the ball when you're phys ed teacher, you're gonna get some OJT. Well, then why not let them graduate from school? And get that OJT that they're gonna get anyway. Why would you sit there and make them go through these nightmares about passing the bar exam? The nightmare that a young person that's twenty-two years of age has come in here talking about, well, mom, dad, I just gotta get into law school. You, you, you know what I mean? This, this, this cycle of, of putting this mental stress on young people, it, it goes on for years and years. Now, ASL does, has a program here and I, man, be correct if I'm wrong, we have a program here that when you're 3L, you graduate. They'll give you a couple, they'll give you three thousand dollars if you stay here for the summer and just drill down like you've been going for the last three years. And preparing yourself to take the bar, whatever jurisdiction that is.
Funding permitted.
I'm sorry?
Funding permitted.
Funding, yeah. You, you know what I mean? But that's, that's, that's fantastic. That's the first real good thing somebody gave you since you started this whole process. Because you got all these law schools telling you, oh, your LSAT score is not good enough. None enough, because it's really at the end of the day, what's the bottom line for the school? The LSAT. From day one, was the bar pass rate, first time bar pass rate, when you go, you know? You know how much pressure that is? It's not like getting shot at, but it's damn near close. And it hurts, hurts a lot of people. And people are stressing out about that.
Yeah. Yep, that's true.
Margaret, I, I will say that, you know, we also have a bar exam that we all have that stress from watching it. As an outsider and watching these for the L, especially the 3L, um, man, the mental toll that the bar exam. It brings back all of the memories, because we walk it out, we forget, I think, because of like our own self-preservation. Of how awful taking the bar is, it's kind of, and watching these students deal with that, the mental toll that it takes on students is.
Do you think it helped you become a better lawyer?
No.
Absolutely not. Zero, zero percent.
I hate to say that, but you know, and I frequently, I taught criminal law last semester. That is geared towards bar exam, which is my other classes that I teach are very much geared towards, this is how we're gonna practice law. When you sit down at your desk and when you sit in the work for the first time, like this is what we need to do. And I think those classes, there's such a stark difference between those classes, um, that I don't think I fully realized until I taught them both.
Not a big difference.
I, I will say, I have, I have a unique perspective to, to share when it comes to that. I know this person, she was top of the class, very cool agent. Top of the class gets a federal grant, very good student, which is not common here in ASL. We don't usually get these beautiful, you know, agency federal accounts, and she landed one. And, you know, there's this, but they place these conditions away, you have to be admitted to a bar by a certain time. It's, it's kind of make or break and it.
What was the time, what was the certain time?
I can't say specifically.
Well, months after graduation?
Yeah, it might have been a year, a year. Um, and it was just, it, it really hurt me, I know this person, uh, personally. And like, it hurt me to see her like go through that because like this is a near four-point-oh student.
Yeah.
Who is now, who had somehow managed to do what most of us are not, not gonna be able to do, just land a job like this. You know, interview skills, all the things, whatever she had to do, great resume for that agency, she somehow manages to land this very competitive job. And now she's working out, like if she somehow, something happens in July.
Shows a bad day.
Lost all that you worked for. And I'm, and I'm talking like a competitive job like, uh, well, FDIC. Honors program.
And she went through, and I don't know if you talked about that, she went through just a series of interviews and. But she is stressed because she's like, if I don't pass the bar, this is such a wonderful opportunity, I'm gonna lose it. And so it goes back to that mental toll, and those students are in that same situation, just different jobs right there. They've got, got a job offer, but they have to pass the bar. Uh, most places only give you one, one chance. And say that, you know, come October, which is when Virginia bar exam results come out, and usually it's, it's around October deadline, um, they've got the pass call.
It is a very failable thing, isn't it? And I don't know that it tests anything about what kind of lawyer you're going to be. Or the process of studying for it doesn't prepare you to engage in the practice of law. And I, I, I think one of my classmates at Richmond, who, he had gone to a top undergraduate college, I won't say which one because people would figure out who I'm talking about. He was CPA, he had a, a degree from, uh, a top MBA program. And had practiced for Big Six accounting firm for a number of years and then went to law school. And was offered a job by a large firm in Virginia, failed the bar exam first time out. Patted him on the shoulder and said, well, good luck, we'll, we'll give you another try. Bails it the second time, because they have him working the whole time of that. He, he ends up going elsewhere, uh, and had a great career practicing once he did pass the bar exam. Uh, and, and now he, I don't want to say too much here because people hear who I'm talking about. Um, but now he has a, a very good job that, uh, requires him to wear a dress to work, shall we say. You know exactly what I'm talking about, so.
So, but let me ask you another question. What we're talking about, we're talking about the bar exam, is the bar exam or the UBE? We're not talking about the professional responsibility portion or bar reading?
No, I don't think most, you know, perfectly wrong, I don't think most students worry all that much about.
So the MPR, everybody's, everybody's stupid about that.
They usually take that, your two-year, uh, and when I was in law school, it was definitely, like, I'm so old, they didn't have it, okay?
I never thought it was a very, the MB.
I don't see any students stressing about that.
Or the MPR, MPR. Uh, well, this is good, I, I think we should finish with our, our, our witness, uh, is there, is there anything else you'd like to say?
No.
Okay.
No, I appreciate you giving me the time, but it's such a hit.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you very much.
I, I'm gonna say something that I did not want to say and other people can't say, which is a, a lot of. When, when we come up with our respective reports and comments and suggestions, there will be a lot of focus on. The bar exam and how that all goes down. And while we have not heard from the broader public in this area. Hearing from the four law students has been incredibly helpful in terms of that particular aspect of this inquiry. And I thank you so much and I wish you every good luck with your careers.
And thanks to them for coming out on Friday afternoon.
Yeah.
Yes.